Scripture that starts off with, the whole study that we're going to begin is out of Joshua, chapter 3, and is a point in the life of the children of Israel here, and a big decision to make, they're going to have to do some things themselves. You know, a lot of times we read through the scriptures and the Lord calls upon folks to let them have to do something. And this is the case here, but chapter 3 and verse 5, Joshua chapter 3, verse 5, says, "And Joshua said to the people sanctify," or the version in our study, "consecrate," means same thing, "yourselves for tomorrow, so that the Lord will do wonders among you." So they have a point in their life where they're going to have to make a decision. And a lot of times, you know, you've heard the term, "step out on faith," step out on faith. But so sanctify, consecrate, set apart, what that means, they're about to cross the Jordan River. And it is a time that they are at the river, and it is the flood season. It would not be a time that you'd want to make, if you ever crossed the, you know, like we crossed the Mississippi River today, if you ever crossed the Beavie River, you know, in Toledo Bend's letting out, there is lots and lots of current. You can cross over the Mississippi a lot of times, and you'll see them whirlpool looking things, and that is a massive, massive river. So they're fixing to have to step out, God's told them, you got to step out first into the water. And we'll get, we'll pick up on that in just a little bit. But here on page 92, where it says, "start," last week, you know, we talked a lot about kingdom men getting along. And people need to get along, and of course, if the church can't get along, we're not going to get just a whole lot accomplished. And you know, one of the things that I thought about when I was reading through the notes, and I wrote up here at the top, you know, again, being here in this study, or you know, coming on a Sunday night Bible study, Sunday morning Bible study, Wednesday night Bible study, it is about so much more than just the Bible study. It is about, it is about growing, it is about getting closer to one another, it is about sharing, whether it be, you know, a burden, a prayer request, or whatever, or knowledge that we have, it's about fellowship, it's about obedience, the Lord calls us to not forsake the assembling of ourselves together, and of course, it is about studying. But I just want everybody to really think about, you know, sometimes we feel like, well, I'm just not getting anything, and maybe you're not where you need to be. But you got to think also about all the other reasons that God has called us to come together, that called us to be together, and particularly, you know, us meeting, because man, the world is after men for sure. So think about all the other reasons. We're talking about the crucial spiritual disciplines for kingdom men is what we'll be covering, and of course, 1 Samuel 15 and 22, I thought about the verse when I was writing down, or when I was reading this, where it says, "talking about the crucial spiritual disciplines for kingdom men." And you know, Samuel, in 1 Samuel, he talked about obedience, and you know, the sacrificial system, we've talked about that scripture a lot, was a big, big deal. And he tells them, he says, "hey, to obey is much, much greater than sacrifice." To obey is much, much greater than sacrifice. Some people think, well, man, I should have sacrificed a lot, and were you worried about what you're sacrificing? Or are you trying to be obedient to God? We need to be obedient to God, whatever that means to us as an individual. So on down there, just a couple of things out of that paragraph, during the year that he wrote this study here, it said, "The world was turned completely upside down," of course, a global pandemic, and he talks about cultural unrest, and then racial tensions. I mean, we've had, it's like that has been picked back up, and they're trying to cause racial tension, they're trying to cause cultural unrest. I mean, we have all these things that our nation has persevered through, and now we've added a new one in there, and we've got the vaccinated against the unvaccinated. That's a new thing to try to divide our country and our people, and so many things. And guess who's behind division and confusion? It ain't the president, it is the devil. Now, the president may be getting used by him and don't realize it, but the devil is in the midst of all of this. He wants to cause confusion, he wants to cause division, but often God uses our circumstances to set the stage for his incredible faithfulness. And a lot of times, we overlook that. God may have you in the middle of something that on the surface seems really bad, and then when you get through it, see that he's already been through it, right? You get through it, you look back, and you see how God is using, or has used, the circumstances that you went through, not knowing, you know, you can't see the other side, he can. But we'll look at today where the life of Israel, where God asks his people to show up, and he was setting the stage for them to take their place in the land that he promised. And we see different stages of that in scripture. And of course, all they need to do, show up, be prepared, and follow God's directions. That was their calling, is to what, and again, God's not ours, God's not ours. But with that, we're going to go ahead and play the video there, Chris.
I gotta turn this off?
No, you can leave it on, I'm sorry. I let you too much video.
God does some of his best work in the lives of men during the floods of life, when we're overwhelmed with difficult decisions, dangerous scenarios. That's when he likes to come through and show us his men, that we should be looking to him to deal with the realities that we face. Because it's in those circumstances, we experience how it really is. The Bible leaps off the page, because now we're confronted with a living God, when life, sin becomes overwhelming. Hurricane Harvey in Houston was one of the most damaging natural disasters that our nation has faced. It was a hurricane that produced a massive flood, endangering the lives of countless thousands of people. One couple that was caught in this dangerous hurricane was J.C. Spencer and his wife. Let me tell you about J.C. Spencer. J.C. Spencer was a connoisseur of Chick-fil-A. He and his wife regularly went to the local Chick-fil-A to enjoy dining together. When Hurricane Harvey hit, they found themselves in an impossible situation. There was no exit, and their lives were in jeopardy. That's when J.C. came up with the idea of calling the manager at Chick-fil-A, Jeffrey Irving. He said, "Jeffrey, I want to order two Chick-fil-A sandwiches." Jeffrey said, "Excuse me, when hurricane..." He says, "Yes, and by the way, when you bring me the sandwiches, bring a boat to deliver them." Jeffrey got the message that J.C. was in trouble. But because he had built this relationship with another man in a crisis situation, Jeffrey, the manager at Chick-fil-A, sent him a boat that delivered him from a flood. You know, life gets overwhelming sometimes. I know what it is to have a whole overwhelming set of scenarios into my world, one after another after another. We get overwhelmed with medical disasters, we get overwhelmed with career challenges, we get overwhelmed with financial burdens, we get overwhelmed with trouble with children, or marriage, or culture, and we're in a flood. For flood zones, when they hit you, they can be overwhelming, and dangerous, and life threatening. But it is during those times, flood season we'll call it, that God is literally setting the stage for the supernatural to invade the natural, to show us how big God really is. God allows flood season, so that he can demonstrate, he alone is God. You remember Israel at the Red Sea, don't you? They were in an impossible situation between a rock and a hard place, caught on both ends, Pharaoh coming one way, Red Sea in front of them. Those are opportunities for God to demonstrate his greater glory. And he had a kingdom man who had to lead kingdom men and their families across an impossible scenario to save the whole nation. He told Moses, "Moses, hold out your rod. Yes, after you pray, now hold out your rod." Because when God calls you to be a kingdom man of faith, he also is calling you not only to pray, but to act based on your prayer. And in an obedient act of faith, the waters parted, he saved himself and the nation and judged his enemy. Because when kingdom men rise to the occasion in the flood scenarios of life, God can change how bad things look, in fact, how bad things are. In the book of Joshua, chapter 3, they come to the Jordan River in flood season, we're talking. It was the time when the waters were rising high, and it was a dangerous time, but they were commanded to cross the Jordan River. But how can we cross the Jordan River in flood season, when we're being overwhelmed by a scenario that's jeopardized ourselves, our family, and our nation? I hope you notice that we're in flood season. Everywhere you look, there are racial floods, class floods, community floods, crisis floods, violence floods, floods everywhere, political floods, and we feel like we're going to drown. And you may be in your own flood season, "How am I going to make it?" When there's this much conflict, this much challenge, this much difficulty, "I am in flood season." Guess what God did? He called his men forward. He called his kingdom men to rise to the occasion in flood season. And he said, "I want you to put your foot in the banks of the Jordan." I want you to put your foot in the banks of the Jordan. And let me give all of us as kingdom men rising a great lesson. While you are waiting on God, God just might be waiting on you. You might be praying, say, "God, do this, do that," and he's saying, "Well, as soon as you demonstrate some faith, I'll be glad to do it. But until I see you walking by faith, not talking by faith, not just praying by faith, not just reading your Bible by faith, I want to see some foot movement, I need to see some footwork, I need to see some action activating your faith. For faith without works is dead," James 2 says. He said, "Priests, put your foot in the water, and when you put your foot in the water, then you'll see what I can do." So the priests went up to put their foot in the water, and when they put their foot in the water, the Bible says, "God blocked the water from coming downstream. He put a dam up in the water, so that the flood was no longer to keep them from crossing the Jordan." That wasn't the only miracle. It sounds like it did it at the Red Sea, they crossed on dry land. Now wait a minute, we're talking about flood season, we're talking about water, how can the ground be dry? Well, that's the second miracle that you don't hear a lot about. God is not only to keep the water from flooding, he's able to quickly dry the land, so you can move forward to the next phase of your kingdom journey. When kingdom men rise to the occasion and put their foot in the water, that is, act in an act of obedience, the human doesn't make sense, because you're in flood season. Then you can see God step up and step out over and over and over in the flood seasons of life. God calls you to put your foot in the water, that is, to step out by faith. Isn't that what he told Peter? He said, "Cast your net on the other side at a time when the fish weren't biting." Now, Peter was the expert. His attitude was, "Jesus, you stick, you stick the preacher. Let me do fishing." You know, I'm part of the Zeppelin Fishing Corporation. We've been fishing all of our lives. We know fish, you know serpents. You stay on the pulpit side, let us stay on the entrepreneurial career, earning side of things. But because you ask, and because we want to show you a little bit of respect, we're going to do what you're saying, because we really want to show you, you really don't know this enterprise. He did what he was challenged to do by Jesus that made no sense, and he brought up the biggest fish haul of his life. I mean, he had enough fish to buy a condo on the Jordan, because he followed divine instruction, and got his posse to follow too. And it says, "Their boats almost sunk, because there was so much fish." See, when God can get kingdom men to rise to obedience in the flood season, in a time when it doesn't make sense, he can show you what he can do. He can show you that when you rise to his obedience, you can see him do things that will blow your mind. What Peter did was, he threw himself at the feet of Jesus and said, "I'm a sinful man." What was his sin? His sin was not believing that what God said would work, even though he respected him enough to do it. Because he learned a great lesson that day, in flood season. You make a call to Jesus Christ, and you find out what God Almighty will do when you rise to the occasion, and you let the men around you. And then Jesus said, "Come on, I'm going to make you fishermen." In other words, it's a little thing, you see me doing that? That's nothing compared to what I want to do with your life, if you'll keep on following me. By the way, back in chapter 3 of Joshua, it said, "Now, when you cross the Jordan, I want a man from each tribe to get a big stone, and to put it on the banks of the Jordan." Why? So when your children ask you, "How did you cross the Jordan into the promised land?" You can tell them about what your God did. When the kingdom men rose up and obeyed God, so your children will be allowed and encouraged to do the same thing because of the model the kingdom men set. It's time to rise to the occasion, kingdom men, because we got a generation behind this, that need to be mentored in what it means to trust God by taking steps of faith. You know, during my special time in life, coming to my birthday, coming to a new season in life, my kids walked across the stage with stones in their hands. Then my grandkids came with stones in their hands. Then my great-grandkids came with stones in their hands. What they were saying to me, they called me Poppy. "Poppy, we're carrying on the legacy that you and Noni, my wife, my late wife laid down. We're carrying these stones to remember that we're carrying on the legacy. Is anybody carrying stones for you, because you stepped in the water, and they're following your lead?" Because when they don't, you wind up with Judges, chapter 2, verse 10, "There was a generation that did not know God, and chaos took over the culture." Now, the kingdom men rise, even in flood season. Step on the banks, and watch God hold back the water and dry out the land.
Just a few things, one went out in there that I took note of when I was watching the video there. Of course, it talks about floods and storms in our life, and you know, things that seem impossible, and definitely can be overwhelming for us. But you know, he says in there, "We're called to pray, but then we're called to act." You know, I've heard people say, "Well, you got to put feet to those prayers. You got to put feet to those prayers." You know, if you're really sincerely worried about somebody's salvation, and you've prayed, prayed, and prayed, and prayed, haven't you ever went and talked to them about their salvation? You know, something to think about there. And I love what he said in there, "While you may be waiting on God, God may be waiting on you." And I think that's probably the case a lot of times. And you see, there's been a common thing throughout this entire Bible study, there's the same thing that we'll be looking at tonight, is discipleship. And you are, if you are Christian, you are called to be, it isn't Brother Clarence's job to disciple everybody. It's everybody's job that is, is a child of God, to disciple other people. It is everybody's job, and that's, that's what his goal is, is to get you guys built up to where you are then discipling other people. That's the entire goal of discipling. So page 94 there, just to pull out a few things, and hopefully you've read through your notes, but if not, you know, we'll hit a few high points there. It said, "Prior to Joshua leading the Israelites across the Jordan River and into the promised land, God asked him and the people to do something." A lot of times, he's asking us to do something. And he said, you know, "Look, you need to," and we read the verse there, "you need to consecrate, or set yourself apart. You need to be different." And he asked them to do something. He says, "To consecrate," there it means to dedicate something or someone to a special purpose or service, is what we're called to do. He asked them to prepare themselves emotionally, spiritually, and physically, prepare themselves. You know, when you get up on a Sunday morning to come to church, or to go to a Bible study, or whatever, you need to do the same thing. You need to prepare yourself emotionally, spiritually, and physically, to come in and receive whatever God has got just for you. And so he's asked, he asked them to do that, he's asked us to do that. And for what he is about to do for them and through them, that's what he's asked them to get prepared for. You know, and how prepared are we to receive God's blessings? I mean, if you're going to go out and you're going to plant a garden, you need to prepare the soil. If you just go out there and just throw them on top of the ground, you're probably not going to have that type of garden. You got to prepare the soil. It won't leave pine. The reason it doesn't do so good around here anymore is because there's no fire. Fire prepared the soil, because that seed has to touch the soil. If it lands on anything else, it's not going to grow. Or if it sprouts, it's just going to die. We're reading the scriptures about that. But so question, just for you to think about, how does God grow us as we prepare to serve him? And when we prepare ourselves emotionally, spiritually, and physically, he is going to help us grow. And he's going to help us then in turn to help other people. And the people of Israel and us now, thinking about it for us, would have to trust God to make it across the Jordan, in flood season, is what we're told in there, and what Dr. Tony talked about there. But think about whatever our problem may be, whatever our situation may be, and that's why their preparation mattered, that's why it does ours. And again, two things there that he pointed out, you know, he didn't just stop the water, but he dried the land, because it wasn't just one or two people that walked across. I mean, they carried chariots, carriages, and just lots and lots and lots of people. You think, if you walk across a place, you know, you go out on the bank of a river, in a sandbar, and you go out there and you walk across that enough times, it's going to break through, because it's still wet. And it's still wet. God dried it out so they could all go across. At the top of page 95 there, it said, "Life gets overwhelming sometimes. We get overwhelmed with medical disasters, career challenges, financial burdens, trouble in our family, trouble in our culture. We live in a flood zone." You know, think in a big scale, not just water, but all the things that happen to us, and often, again, it's overwhelming here. And but see, God always is there. God allows floods to come into our life, and we read through the scriptures, and we see many, many times when we get overwhelmed. You think when Peter stepped out of the boat, he stepped out of the boat, and he took his eyes off of Christ, and he got overwhelmed, and he began to sink, and he got overwhelmed. So something for you to think about here, how can we use these, the opportunities we have to witness God's strength and power in our lives? Now, how can we use these opportunities? These times of turmoil, these times of trial, tribulation, and really just, you know, to be thinking about something that may be going on in your life, and have you let God use that situation in your life? You know, and we, I know when I lost my dad, I was knocked plum down for a while, and it took me a while to figure out. And but since then, I have been able to use that. And then, you know, three years, or two years later, almost to the day, my sister died. And I've been able to use that in ministry to other people that are now going through something similar. And God can use anything if we let him. How can we create, or start being an example? How can we create a culture where men feel a greater need to focus on God and consecrate themselves for the purpose of witnessing God's greater involvement in their circumstances? And one of the things, again, start being an example. Start being an example. We, we have to step up and do what God's called us to do. A little prayer that he wrote there at the bottom is really good. It says, "Father, you have the power not only to dry up the floodwaters, which seek to overwhelm us, but you can also help us pass through the storm on the firmness of dry land, help us to keep our eyes on you, stay focused on you, and consecrate ourselves to do the work of your kingdom." You know, that'd be like a great prayer for every morning. You get up and read that, and whatever you're going to be facing that day. So three principles are talked about there in page 96 and 97, where it says, "Hit the streets." Three principles for a purpose-filled life. So never measure God's movement without first taking a look at your own. You know, there may be something that you're doing, and it of itself is good, but it's not the right time, it's not the right place. You know, it's, it's something there. You know, a lot of times, people come, and they may have ideas and say, "Well, that's, you know, I like what you're thinking, but just not right now, not right now." So we need to, you know, never measure God's movement without first taking a look at your own and seeing what's going on there. Far too often, God is waiting on us as men to do something before he'll make his move. And again, you know how people say, "Well, I just don't know what the Lord's will is for my life," and you don't hardly ever see him in church. I mean, you're not, you're not going to find God's will when you're avoiding God. And God, again, that's where it's, God's just sitting back waiting on you, a lot of times, what happened in there. God frequently waits to see how we respond in faith, before he fully reveals his hand in our lives. Hebrews, chapter 11, and verse 6, the Bible says, so God's sitting back waiting, seeing what we're going to do. It says, "But without faith, it is impossible to please him." Without faith, it is impossible to please him, for he that cometh to God must. So if you come to God, and you say you have faith, this is what your faith is. You must believe that he is, and that he is a rewarder of them that diligently seek him. Do you truly believe that he is a rewarder of those that diligently seek him? So he may be waiting on you to see what's happening there. So they had, Eric Joshua, when he talked about in chapter 3, and several verses, they had to put their feet in the water prior to going across. You know, you had to, you know, sticking your toe in the water, they had to put their feet in the water. It says, "Three examples that they had to go through is these three principles here. But they had to listen, they had to obey, and they had to stand." So number one there, listen, they needed to focus on what God said by consecrating themselves before him, before him. You know, do you really, you know, I think a lot of times, we come in really complacent into church, and we're not, we're not prepared for receiving that blessing. We're not prepared for getting what God has for us. But they needed to focus on what God said by consecrating themselves before him. They wouldn't be able to hear him if they had distractions in their lives at the time, if they had distractions in their lives at the time. And you know, a lot of times, that's the thing, we come in, and we've got distractions in our life. We were got, we were overwhelmed with distractions, and maybe, maybe we need to move some things out of the way, maybe we need to get rid of some things, maybe we need to stop some hobbies or something, and spend more time focusing on God. So the first thing they had to do was listen. The second thing they had to do was obey. So obeying God as a kingdom man doesn't always involve undertaking his methods. Faith doesn't always make sense. Be willing to obey God. And you know, I always thought about Peter, you know, walking on the water. God says, "Come here." And could you imagine what was going through his mind? And then I thought about Paul, where, you know, Jesus blinded Paul, and he said, "I need you to head into town." That, we don't hardly ever talk about that, but he couldn't see. And he said, you know, at a certain time, you know, it's like scales fell off of his eyes. But sometimes, faith doesn't make sense. But are you seeking to do the will of God? Be willing to obey God. The third thing that he talks about, a third principle there, in verse 17, we read, "The priests had to stand their ground in order for the Israelites to pass safely," the scripture. And it says, "And the priests who carried the ark of the covenant of the Lord stood firm on dry ground in the middle of the Jordan, while all Israel crossed on the ground, until all the nation had finished crossing the Jordan." The whole nation. You can imagine, again, walking across that riverbank, the sandbar where it appears to be dry, you walk, and you walk. You walk and you walk and you walk up against the pump and then water begins to come back to the surface. But they walked on dry ground. A, a, a miracle in and of itself. And, and, but the priests, they had to stand, stay, stand firm, let everyone go. And then everybody else could come behind them. Or they could come behind everybody else, sorry. Kingdom men must never waver when called upon to serve God. Standing in the middle of what was previously a raging river isn't the safest place to be from a human perspective. But God doesn't call on us necessarily to live safely. Sometimes stepping out on faith, again, doesn't make sense. But He calls us to live by faith. So a question there at the bottom, that, that, you know, get, get some feedback from you guys. What is it, why is it better to trust in God's power than in human limitations? Think about that. Anybody got one? So why is it, why is it better to trust in God's power than in human limitations?
His power moves.
Uh, that's right, limit less. And, and we go depending on ourself or depending on our neighbor for some things and we're very limited in many ways. You know, we're limited and that, that's why we gotta give it to God. You know, again, thinking about what Moses had to do, think about what Abraham was called to do. Think about Peter and Paul and, and think about Gideon. You know, man, I'm, I'm too, I'm the youngest guy in my family. My family's poor. There's no way you're calling me God. So many times we see in the scriptures where that they're called to step out on faith. As the angel of the Lord that came to Gideon says, "Gideon, I got this." He says, "But, but I, I, I can't do it. I can't do it. I can't be a mighty warrior." The angel called him, I think a valiant warrior in the scriptures there. So page ninety-eight, we hit some high points and, uh, we're gonna get through just that, that first section there and give you guys some homework after this. Life on life discipleship. Again, that is, the whole key is discipleship. And, and you know, we're talking about bumping into different people, Brother Goins was earlier and, you know, having an opportunity to share Christ, having an opportunity to, to, to just interject something about the Lord, be a witness, be a testimony. Life on life discipleship. Developing strong muscles involves a process of tearing the fibers in your body in order to give your body the opportunity to produce muscle growth. So think about that spiritually, the process of building muscle is painful. That's why you're sore after you work out because it's actually breaking down fibers. But it's preparing them to grow even stronger, to grow even bigger. So that process, it can be painful because you can't strengthen your muscle any other way. Spiritually, we have to go and work those muscles. So developing your spiritual walk as a kingdom man often comes during the difficulties and painful scenarios of life. I think we probably could all share a testimony of something we went through difficult that, that we know now God has used. Or maybe God's still using. Or maybe we got, we see that God is, is fixing to use. So similarly, similarly, developing your spiritual walk as a kingdom man often comes during difficult and painful scenarios of life. You know, we have seen many, many, you know, think you just, we had the opportunity to drive down to, to Independence, Louisiana today and, and minister to some people. Give them supplies, give them food, give them dog food, cat food, cleaning supplies, and then opportunity to pray with them. An opportunity to pray with them. And, and you could, you, I just saw the reaction, you know, when I asked, "Hey, is it okay if I pray with you guys before we go?" And they just immediately, sure, everybody come around. And, you know, they, they need that. We have all these opportunities to love on people through a really hard time, a really tough time, you know? Going to a wake last night, you, you have an opportunity to, I spent more time sitting with his, his granddaughter that was probably closer to him than, than many of the others. I just sat down, sat down by her and just let her, just listened. She, I didn't say a whole lot, known her since she was teeny tiny and, um, you know, just, just an opportunity to minister, just, I didn't say nothing fancy, just loved on her, just visited with her. God can use so many different things. Most growth, if we respond to our challenges rightly, is when we get the most growth. When we respond rightly, we will grow. So scripture there, Ephesians chapter one and verse eleven, says, "We have obtained an inheritance, having been predestined according to His purpose, the Lord's purpose, who works all things after the counsel of His will." We have been, we have obtained, we've obtained an inheritance. I, I love to see those words in the scriptures. Question for you, I'd like to hear some feedback. "In what ways can God use pain and brokenness after the counsel of His will?" It talks about Romans eight twenty-eight is a reference scripture there. "In what ways can God use pain and brokenness?" Of course, Romans eight twenty-eight, I just, just to refer to that verse, you know, it talks about that all things work together for, for, for good to those that love the Lord or called according to His purpose. But the thing is, is about, you back up to the word obedience there. You know, "In what ways can God use pain and brokenness?" No matter what we go through, no matter what's happened, if we are seeking His will, if we are seeking to be obedient to Him, then, then His, His will is gonna be done. And, and God can do some wonderful things with us. Another question. "What might it look like to develop your spiritual muscles and in what ways might the process be painful?" Anybody got a response there? Y'all quiet, I'm gonna get Harold to come back so he can answer questions. He, oh, he's got answers every time. So what might it look like to develop your spiritual muscles? In what ways might the process be painful? And of course, you know, the most growth comes in times of trial. And you think, again, you go back to physically, you know, working out until you, you, you know, they, they'll tell you, you know, on, on when you're trying to break through, when you work out for a long time, at some point you peak. And they'll tell you, you start doing things to burn out. You, you know, you push to, you cannot do anymore. Take a break, do it again, and you'll break through that peak. You'll start to grow again. You go through trial, you go through tribulations. God allows things, hey, we're going through a trial right now. Our administration, I don't care what side of the house you own, is a wreck. It is a mess. The administration that calls themselves leadership of our country is an absolute mess. All the way down to our state, it's an absolute mess. And, and you look at, at all the storms and everything that's going on amongst all this, this, this pandemic that's going on. It is all a mess. God is trying to talk to us. God is trying to show us something. God is trying to get our attention as men, our attention as Christians to look to Him. You know, we're, we're sinking down in the water and, and Jesus is reaching down. He is reaching down and saying, "You, you can't do it on your own. Keep your focus on Me," is what He's calling us to do. So another one here says, "Why must we grow in order to help others grow?" Others. So then I said discipleship thing. Why must we grow in order to help others grow others? That's discipleship. If, if we're not the example, we're, we're never gonna disciple anybody else. We're never gonna push them in the direction that they need to go. Uh, top of page ninety-nine there, says, "To honor what they've been given," back to the, the scripture there. "To honor what they've been given, kingdom men must focus on their spiritual growth and development." And you, you have to imagine what those, those priests were thinking when, when, you know, the Lord says, "Hey, you, you got to get into the river." Yeah, but I thought you said you were gonna part the river. I need you to step in first. Think about that. I, I remember the first time I had to do, I used to do a lot of climbing in trees, you know? We'd climb sixty, seventy, eighty, however far up we needed to go in a tree, well, had to be trained first. And, and one of the things we had to learn to do is, you know, because sometimes we may slip or whatever, is depend on our gear. Have confidence in our gear. So we had to get off of our climbing ladder and, and lean back on our gear and learn to descend down, to let ourselves down, rappel down. The first time I ever had to do that, I, I, it was really, really hard for me to let go of that ladder and depend and have confidence in my equipment. And you think of that spiritually, a lot of times we're not willing to let go. We're not willing to have confidence in what Christ said. You know, if He's called you to do something, if He's called you to get up and, and share a testimony or He's called you to get up and sing a song. I mean, y'all don't know how thrilled I was the first time Kylie got up and sang. I've been hoping for that and she sings all the time at the house and, and on her own. I never pushed her too hard, just encouraged her. And one day she said, "I wanna, I wanna sing with Mama." And, you know, it just, uh, just, just gotta step out sometimes. Let those muscles grow. But we have to be disciplined in order to be a good disciple. The process of discipleship, and, and you know, we've talked about that. It's a process where one kingdom man takes the values of the kingdom and transfers them to another who will then transfer them to another. You know, we've talked about it. Our Sunday morning Bible study, the plan is not for everybody to be in the same class forever. We're training teachers. That's what we're trying to do. You know, we've trained and trained and trained and then we have an opportunity like something with Awana. Well, now somebody that's in the class, they step out, step up into a leadership role. That's the whole point of what we're doing to study the Word is to help people grow, to help people grow. You know, I had some people, grown folks, tell me they didn't want to come back to my class no more because they didn't want to have to read out loud. Worked in education. And, and I said, "Okay, well, we'll stop doing that then. You gonna come to class?" "Well, it's just so early." You know, it's just one excuse to the next, right? And, and, but, but we, we have to be willing to step out on faith sometimes. And, and it may be us that needs to do it and somebody else is watching us. And, and that, that little part of that discipleship process, it, it helps them to step out. It's our responsibility. It's our responsibility. We're to do nothing less than what God's called us to do. Stepping out of your comfort zone, standing for God will not always be popular, but it will always reap rewards. You know, it, I can remember in, in the twenty-one years I've been in the government, almost, it would be twenty-one years, March. And, you know, early on, it was complete commonplace if we had a meal or if we had any, hey, would you pray before? You know, would you? That is completely offensive today. It is completely offensive today. Uh, we, we had a meal here, it's, I think maybe it was, I don't know, it was Christmas a couple of years ago and, uh, we got together and somebody called on me to pray, so I prayed. And one of the, the other individuals there spoke up and said, "Well, what if everybody don't believe like he believes?" "Well, don't pray. Don't buy in, keep your eyes open." I mean, whatever. But sometimes, uh, it's not gonna be popular, but if you're serving God, if you're trying to live in God's will, it's always gonna reap rewards. Always, every time. So here's some questions for you to think about since y'all have no answers for me tonight. "Why is it, is, why is it often easier to go on with the flow of cultural norms rather than speak up for God's truth in the midst of worldliness?" Somebody gotta have an answer to that.
You're standing down as different.
Yeah, I don't wanna be different.
Uh, is it?
I don't, I don't wanna stand out. I've been standing out for a long time, so I just give up on not standing out.
Give it up.
You know, the, and, and of course then the devil, you know, he, he wants you to make you feel okay about sin. You know, he'll do that to us and, and that's why it's easier to go with the flow. It's easier to go with the flow. And, you know, you talk about, uh, having people come over to your house, you know, and I, I've heard that many, many times. You know, "Oh, well, we had, we had company this week." Well, why didn't you bring your company to church? Why didn't you bring them? Like you said, Brother Goins, invite them. If they don't wanna come, say, "Well, we'll see you when we get back from church." But so many people, it takes just the smallest excuse to not come. I mean, what a blessing that you might could help put on those folks by bringing them to church. But we just, I don't know, so many people and even in the church, we don't think, and I hear that, I don't know, probably once a month from somebody, "Man, we missed you last..." "Oh, we had company." So did I? You know, but, but anyway, the, the devil wants you to make you feel okay about sin and yet we don't wanna stand out. So when, and it, gotta have some examples here. When has following God, when has following God called you to step out of your comfort zone? And what did you learn? Anybody? Surely somebody had God called you out of comfort zone.
Go back to the old, old sin. Someone who jumps off the bridge, you're gonna follow.
Right.
I mean, it's the same thing. You either have to stand for one thing or the other.
Right.
You gonna stand up for God, stand up for God, for the Lord.
That's right. Absolutely.
And you're, sometime you find out that your comfort zone, the wrong zone to be in.
Right. Yeah, you got comfortable, you know, in a bad place.
That's right. Hey, maybe it wasn't all that bad, but God has another plan.
Right.
As He wanted you to be.
That's right.
"Good Lord, I'm satisfied where I am." You know, "I don't wanna step in the water, get my feet wet."
Right, yeah. I can walk down, I can go down there and walk around. God says, "I told you to go through there." But I, you know, I think back, you know, I was in youth ministry and youth ministries, uh, it, it's, it's fairly, you know, it's not that tough. Uh, I loved messing with kids and I remember when I was moving from Mississippi to Texas, I had never preached in a big church. I had been, I had been preaching to the youth at that point, see, three, uh, four, five, about seven years at that point. And, but I'd never preached in big church. And I, I went, I knew I was, uh, my, my job was moving me to, from Mississippi to Texas. And I went and talked to my pastor, Brother Tommy Briel. And, um, I said, "Brother Tommy, I'd like to just, you know, to share a little goodbye with the church uh, this, this Sunday, be my last Sunday. If you don't mind me getting up and doing that." He started to mind a bit, he said, "Matter of fact, you're preaching Sunday." I said, "That's not what I was saying, Brother Tommy, you know?" And I went to crawfish and he said, "Nope, sounds good." He said, "You got the full fit this Sunday." And so I preached and, uh, I don't have, I don't remember what I preached on, but I know I was scared to death. And, but what God was doing was preparing me. God was preparing me. I left there and I went to Texas and I, uh, became a youth pastor over there. And, and then the pastor said, "Hey, we wanna start doing a, a fifth Sunday service for the youth, youth-led service. And I want you to bring the message every fifth Sunday for that service." "Yes, sir." So, and so God was growing me a little bit more. And, and then, man, I, and I still, you know, no clue that God was gonna call me to be a pastor. God was preparing me. God was stretching them muscles a little bit more and a little bit more and a little bit more and a little bit more. And, and then here we are. And that, that's one for sure, it's taught me stepping out of the comfort zone for me. But I'm sure y'all got some stuff there, just being bashful. But think of what someone, and this is really just where you think about in your mind. Think of someone who impacted your own spiritual growth. And, you know, think about the qualities, you know? And that, that's something, you know, somebody that's impacted you, somebody that's helped you to grow, that that ought to be things that you're, in your mind, you're, you're, you're seeking to emulate. It helped you, well, maybe you can use it to help somebody else. You know, some things to think about there. Discipleship takes boldness, confidence, love, awareness, commitment, all these things. Discipleship is necessary for a kingdom man to pass on a spiritual inheritance. Absolutely. If you ain't living it in your house, you're not gonna pass it on. It, it, it's, you know, what, what's one generation away. You know, we talked about out of judges there. The transferring kingdom values must take place on a regular basis through personal examples and authentic conversations about those examples. You know, a lot of times just, just sharing, "Hey, this is what happened to me. This is what I went through." You never know how you might impact somebody. But, uh, takes place person to person, heart to heart. It's gotta be real. It, it's gotta be true. Second Timothy there, you know, Timothy, uh, Paul was mentoring Timothy, said, "You therefore, my son, be strong in the grace that is in Christ Jesus. The things which you have heard from me in the presence of many witnesses, entrust these to faithful men who will be able to teach others also." It's, it's, that's all about discipleship. You know, Paul, other times, Paul, he said, "Hey, things that you've seen in me." I mean, he was to the point, says, "Look, I have tried my best to live this before you." And then when he's, you know, he's teaching young Timothy there, you know, define discipleship. I think learning it, learning it and, and then setting it as an example in your life. So learn it, apply it, and then teach others. Learn it, apply it, and then teach others what you've learned. You need to show more than words, you know? Words, people say talk is cheap, right? So in, in what ways does discipleship influence and impact our culture for good? You know, we kind of talked about that one. It, it's, talks about, you know, who has discipled you and who can you disciple? So I was thinking when I read through this, you know, when I was in, uh, Mississippi, or excuse me, in Arkansas, who was somebody that really discipled me? Uh, Mr. Webwatz. And, and then, you know, when I moved to North Louisiana, I was thinking of somebody that, that I felt kind when I moved to North Louisiana, I was thinking of somebody that, that I felt kind of like discipleship, discipled me, and a, a guy named Shane Frye, still really good friends with him. And then when I went to Mississippi, you know, I was thinking, who's somebody there that I really felt like discipled me? Mr. David Hudson. He was our, uh, at the time, I was the young adult, uh, young adult Sunday School class. Great, great mentor. Still stay in touch with him sometime. When I went to Texas, Mr. Lynn Denman, he passed away shortly after I moved, but great, great discipler of people. You know, and I come here and, and, you know, Brother Goins, you're sitting here, and I'd say that if you wasn't sitting here, Brother Goins has been more of a, of a mentor and a discipler to me than any other pastor that I've ever had. And, and that is, that is a great blessing. And then, you know, I see, you know, work ethic of, of Brother Clarence, you know, and, and just goes and goes and goes. And now we're fixing to work full time. You're just short. But you, you know, think of people that, that have discipled you and maybe you hadn't even thought about it before. Now you're thinking about it, saying, "Well, gosh, man, yeah, oh, so and so," you know. Well, what was it that they did that impacted you? Try to emulate that. Try to be that. And then you then be a disciple to somebody else. But at the root of all the issues we face in our nation, communities, churches, families, and in our individual lives, is the lack of transference of kingdom values. No discipleship. And, and it's really, really getting, you know, just like tonight. And I know people are busy and got a lot going on, but, but I, I think I sent a text, I think 32 men, I think though 40, I think 42 men is what I sent it out to. And, and, you know, some are legitimately busy, some just don't wanna come. And, you know, but man, getting us together, it, it is something special. I always look forward to getting us together. You know, when we pray on Sunday mornings, it, it, to me, is, it is a special thing. Couple of, uh, scriptures there. Luke chapter six, verse 40. "A pupil is not above his teacher, but everyone," and this is all about discipleship, "but everyone after he has been fully trained will be like his teacher." Of course, ultimately, you know, we're seeking to be like Christ, but are you seeking to be fully trained? Are you seeking to learn? John 13:15 says, "For I, Jesus, gave you an example that you also should do as I did to you." You know, and that, that goes on talking about, you know, love as I've loved you. And a couple of little points there, uh, finishing up that last page on 101. Describe the cycle of discipleship based on these verses. And, and we've already talked about it, you know, learn it yourself, apply it, and then teach it. That is what it's got to be about. "Why is it sometimes tempting to leave the role of discipleship to those who can, who we consider to be professional Christians, right? Like pastors or, you know, our Bible study leaders. And, and way too many people get comfortable with complacency. That's my seat. That's where I wanna sit. And that's my ministry. And that's it. Don't ask me to do anything. Don't ask me to get up. Don't ask me to pray. Don't ask me to help with nothing. Y'all can be happy I showed up. And that, that's how some people are. We need to get out of our comfort zone. What should I, what, or excuse me, what should it teach? I ain't gotten used to bringing my classes with me yet. What should it teach us that Jesus' first disciples were ordinary men with no formal education?" About the only one that I can think of, at least off the top of my head, uh, that, that we read more about, you know, Paul, I mean, he had some religious education, but he was not a Christian before he met Christ. But just for the most part, he used just everyday people, everyday people that he used. I mean, and, and, and not all of them were good people when he got them. Not all. But you think of Matthew, he was a thief. He was a crook. He stole people. You think of Paul or Saul before he came, uh, before we know him as, as Paul. Uh, I mean, he was after Christians, after Christians. And that's what, that the Lord went after him. And I think, you know, that's one of the deals where he was waiting on him there. So the Israelites faced this river in Joshua, chapter three. But we as men face our own rivers today. In order to rise up and cross through that which seeks to stop us, we're going to need to commit to this thing called doing life together. We're, we're a lot stronger together to hold people up, hold each other up. We're going to need to embrace the call to kingdom discipleship on a different level, on a deeper level. And, and his closing prayer that, that Dr. Evans wrote there, it says, "Pray about anything in your life that may exhibit, that may inhibit you from fully living out your call to be discipled and to disciple others. Ask God to remove any obstacles in your way so that you can leave an impact on the lives of those around you. Be willing to embrace life's difficulties and pain as a way of growing spiritually. And spend some time seeking the Spirit's discernment on how you are to grow through the challenges that you face." So I underlined a few words in there. You know, think about things that inhibit you from fully living. Remove these obstacles. Be willing to embrace what God's called you to do. And, and then grow and continue to seek Him. Just a few words that, that stand out in there. We're gonna stop right there. I think a good stopping point. And that, that leaves you with a, a short section to study at home. And, uh, go ahead and, you know, start peeking over into the next section, section seven there. We don't have the two sections left. Uh, and we'll finish up the study. But, uh, we got just a, just a little bit left in this one here about take a step and grab a stone. You know, we talked about that in there and what the, the stones represent. But I, I appreciate you guys coming and sharing this with me. And hopefully you got some little, little nugget. But again, I wanna read one last thing that I wrote in there about coming. So being here is about so much more than just this Bible study. It is about so much more. It is about growing together. It is about getting closer amongst us. It's about sharing amongst us. It's about fellowship. It's about obedience. And, and yes, it is about study. But it's so much more than just this Bible study. We need to think about that. Let's stand and we'll be discussed. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord. Thank you for these men that have come. Lord, thank you for this fellowship that, that Lord you bless us with. Lord, we get the fellowship with you. We get the fellowship with one another, Lord. Just pray a special blessing upon any need that may be amongst us, Lord. Pray for our community, Lord, and all those, Lord, that have, have been impacted or been impacted or may be impacted, Lord, by this virus. Lord, pray for the many families that have experienced loss of loved ones, Lord. May we get on fire like never before about sharing your love and the salvation that you have offered to each and every one of us, Lord. May we share your love with all those we have an opportunity to do so with. We thank you. We love you. In Jesus' name. Amen.